So thank you for being here. And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and saying a little bit about why you're running, what qualifies you to take on this role on the city council? And if you're elected, what your highest priority would be?
Yes, my name is Kelvin Scott. I'm an employee at TBA. This is actually my second time running for public office. Prior to this, I did six years at the election commission as the election commissioner. And so I had a great opportunity to be able to see how the political system work, how to have meetings and work with both sides on different issues as it comes to elections and voting and things of that nature. And so I've had a great opportunity. I've also had an opportunity to do enormous partnerships with different entities in the city of Chattanooga on jobs, helping with jobs, helping with GEDs. I did some extensive work helping with the gangs and helping them get stuff expunged. And so I've been able to do those things. I'm currently now on the Hampton County Juvenile Court Board for foster care. So I do that as well over there with Judge Philly out in that great staff over there at juvenile court. And so I'm running because I was asked by people in the community, you know, to run and their, their issues was safety. A lot of seniors was having issue that, you know, they're retired now and they would love to sit on a porch and be in a garden and do those different things, but because of safety, you know, drive-by shootings, gang violence and those type of things, they are afraid to sit on a porch. And so that was a major concern for the constituents. So it became a concern for me because my issues is not me, my issues is for the people of the community. And so the second thing was jobs. You had people working, but they were not making a good quality wage or they were not retaining the jobs. And so we had a lot of people, it was not that they did not want to work or couldn't work or whatever, but they just needed a few little skills, a few little things that they need to know about properly filling out applications. What's the proper attire to where to interview, talking the correct language that people are talking in those types of settings. So it was just small little technical things that they could polish up on and be able to become retainable on the job. We don't just want people to get jobs. We want them to be able to retain the jobs and retire there and do all those great things. And then the final piece that the community was talking about was economic development. And I know everybody always talking about economic development, but economic development plays a critical part for us. Housing, property value, attracting businesses into your district, the quality of life. All that is tied into the economic development. And so one of the things that I've learned in doing my research is that the city actually pays the Chamber of Commerce to control the economic development. And so a lot of people, you know, you have all these questions. And if you don't go to the right sources or the right people to get the right answers and to get things done, you stay in limbo and you think, oh, as is our city councils and well, it's not just the city council, but it's those partnerships that are out there that we need to be aware of and that we need to tap into to be able to effectively help mature and grow and make our district attractive.
Thank you so much for that answer. Our first question is, or our first couple of questions are going to be about the budget. The city's estimated to lose $8 million in the 2021 fiscal year. And that's mostly because of the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. So if you're elected, how would you balance a challenging budget in 2022? Or even after that, also expecting that more economic stress will be on the budget because of the pandemic, the continued effect of pandemic?
That's a great question. I think part of it is you have to look for opportunities or more opportunities on grant money that's designated or earmarked for those type of things that you do not have to pay back or you do not have to absorb in your own physical budget. There are many things out there that we could be exposed to or we could be eligible for. I think we just have to spend more time researching those things that we can tap into that we necessarily do not have to absorb in our own budget that is free dollars out there to do that. And also, I think the best time to prepare for crisis is to do this when there is no crisis. In other words, set things in place, set systems in place that if something happens, this is what we're doing. This is how we're addressing. So basically being more proactive instead of reactive. So I think a lot of the things that we're dealing with, with this tragic pandemic, it was due to a lot of things were not set in place for such a type of incident like this. And so I think the government should always be on the front line of being proactive, just in case this happens. We got this in place to do this and do that. I remember when I was in school, we always practiced tornado drills. And how often do we have tornadoes? Well, we didn't have them that often. But when we did have them, we was already prepared and everyone knew where they had to go. Everyone knew their spot. You know, the kids knew what they had to do, how to get in a proper position, all those things. So I think we have to do the same thing with government and budgets is that we have to allow a structure that when these type of things happen, we have something in place to help us. It might not totally resolve it, but we don't get hit with the total impact of what we're getting hit with.
So continuing on that theme, as we approach almost a year since the first case of COVID-19 was detected in Chattanooga, businesses and individuals have struggled because of the economic and societal impacts of the virus. So how would you provide aid to businesses and families who are most in need because of the pandemic's economic impact? And are there programs currently in place you'd like to keep or any new programs that you think the city should add?
Well, I think one of the things we have to do is I'm totally, I totally have problems with these loans that they want to give small businesses. Oh, my thing is if they could afford to pay back a loan, they wouldn't need the loan. If that kind of makes sense, because theoretically what you're doing is creating another bill. If they get $10,000 or $15,000 through the incentive program, the COVID incentive program that the city is doing, you're just now tacked on another bill. And so now, not only are they having to worry about keeping their business open and sustaining and keeping employees, now they got another bill of paying this money back that they got for assistance. So I think we need to do a better job of finding here again, creative ways of getting grant money or getting other elements to where we help the business. And the same thing with the businesses that you have to set up for what I call a rainy day. This is a rainy day and it's pouring. You know, you have to have things in place in your small businesses as well to be able to sustain certain things. And I think a lot of the small businesses probably don't know how to structure or how to do that. They, a lot of them is just going from month to month. You know, they, whatever they make, they go ahead and pay bills, you know, pay their, you know, employees. If they got one or two employees, you know, then try to live off of it with themselves too. And so I think it's more so of a month-to-month thing versus really send down strategic planning. Okay, I need to set X amount of money aside each month for just in case something happens, you know. If I have a restaurant, if the, if the refrigerator goes out, if the air system goes out, we have to do those type of things. And sometimes it's just so big, the crisis is so big, no matter what we did is just not enough. So I think we need to help these small businesses do a little bit more of strategic planning for incidents like this and how they can strategic plan to grow their business, how they can strategically plan on maintaining, you know, their stuff and employees, how to run a better business. I think a lot of them just really don't know, you know, they just been there 20, 30 years and never had to deal with anything like this. And so it shows the different areas where improvement is needed.
Yeah, this is definitely an unexpected challenge. So moving on to a new topic, paving and transportation consistently rank at the top of citizens' concerns according to annual studies done by the city of Chattanooga. So what transportation or infrastructure goals would you have if you're elected to represent District Nine on the council?
Well, a part of the, well, I know part of the problems as it relates to jobs is the routes of getting folks from certain urban areas out to those places that has, you know, the Volkswagen's on a consistent basis. They have a few routes, but consistently getting folks availability to be able to get to those places to where they can work. Also, we have to make sure that we're using public transportation. A lot of times those routes is based upon how many people are getting on that bus, you know, and going and actually using that transportation to go and use those things that we say that we need. So I think it's a two-fold thing that we need more accessible, more job-friendly routes. But at the same time, we need to make sure that when they do these type of thing, that we actually use the transportation. For example, I see buses going up and down Brandon Road a lot. A lot of them are empty. They're not even half full. So you're talking about fuel, you're talking about paying employees benefits, you're talking about all those other things. So we have to make sure that when those things are accommodating us, that we actually use them to where everybody is a win-win for everybody. So I think it's a great responsibility. And I'm assuming you're talking about Carter, that Carter does their part. But at the same time, we need to make sure that we utilize the transportation that's out there. If you go to a lot of major cities, people have cars, but they'll ride on public transportation and park their car to get back and forth to work. One, it cuts down on traffic and those great things. But they also understand that if you don't utilize that, it will go away because there, you know, at the end of the day, everybody's trying to make some money. So you have to adequately utilize those things and, but it has to be a friendly thing with Carter to make sure that things are accessible to get people back and forth to and fro. I know when I was little, we didn't, you know, growing up in a single parent home, we didn't have a car. So we would ride Carter, we would catch a bus, go downtown, get a transfer to go to East Gate or go to North. We actually really, really used public transportation. So I think if we can, we need to get back to that for Carter to be sustainable. But at the same time, it has to be people-friendly, job-friendly in order to get the maximum of what their goal is. And then the maximum of the people are being able to get taken care of.
Right. Okay. So moving on to some questions about businesses and the economy. City labor unions and some activists have supported a $15 minimum wage for city employees, which Mayor Andy Burke had intended to begin implementing before COVID-19. Do you support that or any other specific pay increases for city employees? And if you could say why or why not?
I support the $15 rate of minimum pay across the board. The reason why if a person makes a quality living, then that person opens up the doors to get homeownerships. They can afford to pay to get a home. They can afford to pay to upscale their living conditions because they're making the income to be able to do that. So I think what you make directly ties into your living conditions for is what you can afford to pay for homeownership and those type of things. But I think it also, it evens the playing field of people being able to take care of their family. And I also think it cuts down on the illegal stuff. If I can make a decent living on a job, it cuts down on the opportunity of me making, or want to go make decisions to do other things to try to offset what I cannot make on a job because it's not paying enough money. So I think in paying a good quality money, that it opens up the door for other things. But at the same time, I think we need to understand that if that was to happen and it goes up, it's going to be a lot required on the individual that's applying for these jobs or working these jobs, that the criteria is going to go up on them because we're paying you more money. And so we need to be prepared to not only receive the $15 an hour, but also understand that there's going to be more criteria, more things that's going to come along with that to make sure that they're getting the best for the, I guess, the bang for their buck or whatever.
So in 2019, to follow up on that, 40% of Chattanooga's households were considered housing cost burdened, meaning that they spent more than 30% of their income on rent or on housing and therefore may struggle to afford other necessities. How would you, if you're elected to the council, help address affordable housing?
Well, here again, I think is very critical that the people in the community understand how that works. It's market-driven. So when you go and you try to get, say, a two-bedroom apartment, one bath or two baths, the market drives what that's going to be across the board. At a minimum, and then some people maybe charge extra depending on the area and all those great things. So I think we have to do a better job of working with the Realtors Association, those type to better understand the marketing. But here again, what we were just talking about, a more quality pay will help offset if, if, you know, if 30 or 40% is going to household, it lets me know that not enough money is coming into the house to take care of other stuff. So the increase in pay should help offset that and should put you in a better position to have a better housing arrangement. I would much rather see more home ownership than rental because homeownership is an investment. So as you know, if you can go pay $1,000 for an apartment, then you should try to position yourself and do whatever it takes to fix yourself up to be able to get a home and spend that same $1,000 a month on homeownership. So you can actually see the value of your money because you get, you got a home, but it's an investment which, you know, you building equity and all those great things. So you actually getting more of a direct benefit than if you're renting from somebody else and somebody else is getting the benefit off of your month-to-month.
So a number of Chattanoogaans are experiencing homelessness. And if you're elected, how would you further the city's progress toward reducing homelessness and addressing that issue?
Well, you know, and that's a great question. Worked quite a bit with some of the homeless people and some of the things. So I think we have to address is other issues that we're not addressing that comes along with that. You know, a lot of them have some mental issues. A lot of them have other things going on that is causing them to be homeless. Some of them have bad people overlooking their money. You know, a lot of them get checks. We just, you know, they getting, you know, whether they're veterans or, you know, they're disabled or some other things, they're getting texts and the people that overlook their money haven't totally done them right. So I think it's a lot of social issues. I think it's a lot of mental issues that we need to do more of a collaboration with those people like psychiatrists counselors to make sure we not, to make sure that we really get to the problem as to why they're homeless and why they can't maintain a home. Some of them, if you gave them a brand-new house tomorrow, still would mess it up because it's other underlying issues that are going on that are not being addressed. You know, we're hitting the surface with getting you housing, but we're not hitting the surface as to why some of these other issues could contribute to you being homeless, drug addiction. You know, there are many different things that happen. You know, no job, you know, some, you know, you can't pass a drug test, so you don't have a job, so you, you know, you're hung. And so there's so many different things that are going on, you know, some of it is you have parents that, you know, they got three or four kids. So which means you know, to get a home or somewhere with three or four kids, the price is going to be up because there's more rooms, more bathroom. So I think we have to do a better job of understanding why they're homeless and what we can do to fix that. And I think being able to give them somewhere a transitional place for them to come and transition, not permanent residence, but to give them a transition to help address those other issues to where they can get out and they can maintain their own, you know, apartments or homes or whatever.
Thank you. So moving on to a question about downtown Chattanooga, which was once a showcase and other cities came here to study the revitalization in downtown. It seems to be struggling to hold on to businesses. There are a lot of empty storefronts. So how can that be improved? And what factors do you think have made downtown less appealing to businesses? Also, if you could say whether you support the Business Improvement District?
Well, the first part of your question, I think it goes back to the rent. If you don't have customers for whatever you service you're providing, that rent is, yeah, I don't know if you you know, you're paying thousands of thousands. Say if you want to have a restaurant downtown, you know, that rent is going to be in a, within that $3,000 to $5,000 or more range. So if you don't have the clientele or the people coming in to generate that, it's easy for you to get behind and fold up and lose your place. And the pandemic did not help. And so I think we need to do a better job of helping businesses really focus on good business and marketing plans. You know, it's easy to say, okay, I got first month rent, you know, last, you know, deposit, I'm ready to move in. But you really strategically have not sat down and did a good portfolio of your business. You know, who are, who are you catering to? Who are you, you know, going after? What particular group are you going after? Okay, what are you going to offer that's different than Mr. Thomas next door? Both of y'all have a restaurant. You know, that's marketing. You have to spend money in the marketing and those things. You have to spend money to make money. So I think a lot of times businesses go in, open up, but they don't invest into the other pieces. Either they don't have the cash on hand or they don't fully understand what it takes to really thrive as a business for marketing. Now, for as the business district, I understand what they're trying to do. But I think that would not work all over the city. Some districts, whether there are businesses there, they would not be able to afford to pay those fees, those monthly dues or whatever that they are charged to pay. So I think some of it is good, but I think you will have to take it and apply it to the different areas across the city. One thing I will say, it makes a difference. It makes a difference when you go in before a city council or county commission asking for certain things that you're organized and you strengthen them. I feel that, you know, what it did do for the ML King downtown, it organized them. It put them in a structure that hadn't been there in years. So when they go before the governing bodies, it's not one person. Now you got 60 or 70 businesses coming in front of you. That makes a difference when you're trying to get things done in your area. So I think the structure piece and all that is a great idea of getting you structured, those things and maintain us. But I don't think it's something that will be able to go across city when it comes to the fees and the monthly dues that's being asked.
So moving on to public safety. Chattanooga saw a sharp increase in gun violence in 2020. How would you, as a council member, work to lower crime rates in the city?
Well, I think a lot of it is addressing those issues that a lot of people do not want to touch. You know, you have to go and it's a lot of struggling homes that a lot of these youths are turned to the streets. There are so many different things. If you talk to a lot of youth that's in gangs, we'll just use that. And you ask them, why are you in a gang? They'll give you a large rate of reasoning as to why someone, you know, they feel loved. They feel that they're part of something, you know, they belong to something. But they don't understand it's a taboo, it's a mirage that once you get in trouble or something, you out there by yourself. You're back to where you started from. So I think we have to do a lot of more education and more helping and teaching to the parent, to the homes, to the family. When you are able to teach them and show them different things on how to do what they do to be able to be a successful family, that can produce a different outcome. Sometimes people do what they do because that's all they have seen and that's all they know. So you have to give them a different perspective into a way to where they understand this is how you set yourself up to be a more productive citizen or more productive person. And a lot of that comes, you know, the same subject we've just been talking about, jobs, you know, adequate living, the environment. I think we need to do a better job with, with police and community relations to where you get back to knowing that a lot of communities that crime is low is because they know the lady across the street, if she see you doing something, she's going to call 911. You know, they, they're going to report things that, you know, it's quick response with the police to that area. So I think that we have to do more education. I think locking them up is not the answer, but we have to here again, get to the root as to why they're doing what they're doing, the crimes, the gun violence, what is, what is, what is causing that? We need to get to the root issue as to not just say, well, they doing it because this, this, whatever. It's generally something else that's triggering that mechanism. And some of it is mental, some of it is is some family issues that we need to do a better job with the social services, working with them, better fund them to be able to do some things that they do. You know, a lot of the social services that we rely on so heavily are so underfunded. And so I think by helping them, better funding and doing some of these things to help the family, I think it will cut down, it won't eliminate it, but I think it will cut down on some of the gun violence and some of the violent crimes that we see in the city and holding people accountable.
So over the summer, activists here in Chattanooga and across the country protested police brutality and demanded either defunding or divesting from police departments. Would you support either defunding or divesting from the Chattanooga Police Department or any other reforms? And if so, like what would you consider a good law enforcement reform that you could support?
Well, I would support anything that's about collaboration and relationship. Okay. When you start talking about defunding and taking money away, then something in that department is going to suffer to absorb that loss. So if you take money away to put into something else and they say, well, we got to cut back on the homicide division, I don't think you want that, you know, when you need someone to come out and solve a murder or solve a crime. I think we have to be careful as to when you start talking about taking money for this to do this. A lot of the stuff that we're doing that is good ideal in theory, but we have to go look at how our local government structure is set up. But we have to go look at how our local government structure is set up. Our local uh, charter would say we're city council, since that's what I'm running from, is dictated by the state. So it's a lot of things that we wanna do that is prohibited in our charter and our guidelines from the state, so it won't be, be done anyway. So it's really a, a fight that you're really not going to win legally. It's a moral victory when you get out there and talk about it, but legally. You're not gonna, you're not, you're not gonna win that battle. And I think is, we need to, what we do need to do. Is we need to create better relationship and we need to hold our police officers accountable. We need to hold the leadership of the CPD accountable, the chief of police, the deputy chiefs. The lieutenants, the captains, all the way, the sergeants, you know, the detectives. We need to hold accountability to uh, internal affairs to make sure. That when these types of things, none, that is something actually really done, it's not thrown in a file with a whole bunch of other files and. Hoping over a period of time it blows away. No, we have got to address these issues. We have got to be transparent. With these issues, but I think more so in that we have to do a better job of creating better relationships. And we have to do a better job of all people are equal. Uh, you, 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 you cannot have dialogue when it's one-sided. You have to. Understand that everyone was created equal. And when you go in, in that business, you carry yourself and you do your job in that manner. Some of that stuff eliminates, some of that stuff cuts down, but I think we need to have more training. Uh, of community relations and how to deal with certain situations. That uh, maybe some of them are not that well-trained in the area dealing with, say if you approaching a mental. Case person that has a weapon, how do you deal with that? Who, do you need to have a, 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 a counsel on hand with you? How do we deal with that to where it does not end? In a death because you didn't know that this person has some mental issues or whatnot. So I think we need to do a better job of training and those type of things, but uh, taking money. You know, if you set up another thing and take that money, give it to them, then who's gonna oversee the other place that you're taking that money and switching it to? It becomes the same thing. It's a cycle. So what we have to do is hold people accountable. If they're not doing what they're supposed to do, get rid of them. Get someone else in that's going to do, but I think we, we could accomplish this. By having more understanding on both sides, showing love and being able to treat everyone equally.
So following up on that, um, during the protests over the summer, there were. Being some vandalism, some disruption to businesses and some confrontations with police. And there were also a lot of people who criticized law enforcement for restricting access to public areas for surveillance. And for the nature of some arrests. So if, if there were to be similar protests during your term on the council. How would you wear restrictions for activists and also for police presence? And what?
Okay, we keep phasing in now. Um. I think you have a right to express yourself. As long as you're doing it in a peaceful manner that is not infringing upon someone else. Here again, it comes back to. Police and community relations. Because you are angry and you do have a right of freedom of state, uh, speech, does not mean you can do whatever you wanna do. So I feel like that freedom of speech is so important as long as it's done in a peaceful manner. When you start destroying government property, when you start doing other things to incite. Or cause potential. Harm to somebody or those things, then you have no choice but to bring uh, some law enforcement. You know, people in or whatnot. So uh, here again, I think if you understand and have better. Relations, that it will cut down on some of the uh, violence or some of the. Uh, treatment, but when you're doing your protests, when you are doing your freedom of speech. As long as you're following the laws and you're doing it in a way that is supposed to be done, I see no problem with that. But here again, it goes back to uh, relations, not just the uh, the police department. Understanding the community, but the community understanding what the police department and what their job is and. What they have to do and they wanna go home too.
Thank you. So how do you see the relationship between the mayor and the city council? What should that look like? And if you're elected, will you cultivate a relationship with the mayor?
Uh, the mayor and the city council should, here again, is another partnership. Most of the stuff that the mayor does has to go through the city council. So here again, I know I keep saying the same thing, but relationships are so important. It does not mean because you're in a relationship, it's just like a marriage. You could be married four to fifty years, but that don't mean that you will always agree with your spouse, that y'all never had a disagreement. Or, you know, those type of things. You can agree to disagree, but it's how you resolve conflict. Now, uh, this might seem like I'm going off course, but it's some, it's, it's, it's gonna give some context to what you're asking. If you got a person that is elected, that does not know how to do, deal with conflict. Then it's no different than when you're dealing with someone that's not elected and just on, on a job or. Many different things. You have to deal with personalities. You have to understand how to deal with personalities. But at the end of the day, the, the, the local government only going to function. As well as the relationships that uh, that is created. So what you wind up having. Is you wind up having whoever is mayor, they wanna make sure that all they got is five, all they need is five votes. So if they can get the five votes, then they're satisfied. But you, you, you bypass the credence or you bypass. The position that the other four that may not have voted for you where they're coming from. So I think you have to do a better job of not just looking just for the five votes. But also seeing how can we effectively work together as a unit? The mayor's office and the city council to effectively, at the end of day, take care of our citizens and our constituents in our districts.
Thank you. So um, one last question. Would you support public money for a new stadium for the Chattanooga Lookouts? Now that is not, I should clarify that that has not actually been requested yet, but it's something that has been discussed. So should it come up? Where would you stand on that?
I say we should partner uh, because. You. The city gains money from the lookouts when they bring the team in, from hotels. From other entities, it should be here again, another partnership. I think the bulk of the money should come from the owners, but I do feel that the city has a responsibility. To help contribute to that because they're gonna be beneficial when it comes to taxes. It's gonna generate uh, money for hotels and all those other great things. So I think you should. Assist or have something in it, but not to the extent. That you're soaking all the money out the city to help support this and some other things go unattended, but I think it should be a partnership. To where everybody wins, because like I said, you, you benefit from taxes and. You know, you're gonna make money from the tourism as people come in, spend the night, all those type thing. So I think it should be a collaboration. But I think the bulk of it should come from the owners of the uh, a team. And that's like anywhere, if you look anywhere across the country. When you look at the NBA, the NFL, the city always help partner. With the professional team when it comes to stadiums, you know, they in a contracts, they do all those things because they understand. Yes, it's owned by someone else, but they also know that they're gonna reap some benefits. Uh, hotels and all those great things that comes along with it. So you have to show. That you are willing to invest and partner with those team, because if not, the team believe you don't have anything.